Been signed by a board letter from Intola. I just know I wasn't planning and I kept getting texts and I was like, how do people know?
So, because it'll take a while for them to fill your position, if they ever do. Then how will we, will we just operate like we?
You continue to operate, you're working with Marty, Marty's gonna be reporting to Audrey Garrett temporarily. Until there's a new Development Services Director and then Marty will report to them, so.
That being said, I'm going to be recording these meetings. Do my minutes a little bit ahead of time so I can get those to you and.
You're already working as the Chair with Greg, so you'll just continue to do that, be seamless. I'll be here for your meeting today, I'll be here next Wednesday and I'll be here on the twentieth, it'll be my last meeting with tourism. So we've got three meetings, two work sessions.
And I will not be here next week.
And a regular meeting.
And I'm going with Si.
I will actually, I, I think I'll actually be on the airplane during the meeting, so I won't even be able to call in, so. You guys will be able to do what you guys wanna do, whatever.
Camilla left us with that.
So do you wanna get going, Si?
Okay, are we ready? Okay, call to order? Nine oh five?
Camilla here.
And why don't we start doing roll call officially instead of you guys calling your roll?
Oh, okay.
Um, so I'll do it this time and then Marty, how about you do it going forward? Campbell? Cress?
Here.
Lackey?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Um, Salazar? Not here, okay. So we'll note that we're, Joey is not present. So anytime we do roll call after a vote, we'll do the exact same thing, it'll go alphabetical order with Chair being last. So the order for roll call will be Campbell, Cress, Lackey, Salazar, and then Michaels. And then we'll start with roll call for the meeting and then anytime you make a motion in a second, which we're not doing today because it's a work session, but anytime you do that. Marty will take a roll call, it clarifies for us in doing the minutes exactly who voted what. And I think we need to also anticipate that we're gonna have split votes and we actually need to record you saying yes or no after your voice is called, so. Okay, everybody good with that change? Okay.
Okay, um, it's a work session, so.
So.
Is there, uh, I don't see that we're open to other discussions today, is?
So I wanna state that, and that's a great point, when Si requested the work session, we were kind of unclear as to what. So we put what we thought from the last meeting, but I certainly wanna state that this is a work session, that we're not voting on anything. And so if there are things we need to clarify.
Right.
Then let's go ahead and bring them into the discussion. And then what we'll do from now on, and, and this will be the second thing in requesting a meeting is. This one came about really fast, but if any one of you wanna request a meeting, we ask that you email Marty and copy Si and that you spell out the agenda items. So we're not guessing what the discussion's gonna be.
And then.
So if you had something, then you could've said, if we're going to have a work session, Marty, copying Si, I wanna make sure this is included. Nancy could've said, I wanna make sure this is included. And then even if they were similar items, but a little bit different, Marty would list everything that you had on the list.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say I'd be comfortable to go ahead and, uh, tell Camilla too, so in case one of us aren't here, we.
Well, we get into an open meeting, so we, we can't do that, so, um.
But you can tell Camilla.
You can certainly, uh, forward it to Camilla. But if Nancy's forwarding something to Marty, she cannot copy, or, or we might as well just have an open me- meeting, right? So, point, point taken, but just for protocol. So I think we're, we're clarifying some things, we're gonna do roll calls from now on on all our votes and at the beginning. Any agenda items you guys are gonna request in writing, so we don't have to guess exactly what that is. And then Marty, in reciprocation, is gonna have to you guys on the Monday before Wednesday meeting, your packets that include your minutes. That include the items that we have, so let's say Camilla requests an agenda item on a Friday. And Marty closes the agenda and she posts it, but Camilla's item requires some, I have some, some deliverables or some, something to go with it. And Camilla doesn't get that to Marty, then Marty's still sending the packet out Monday absent those items. So keep in mind that if you're requesting an item, like if you've met a consultant or you want something to be discussed. It's on you to get Marty those items, and if you don't, then we'll still put it on the agenda, but we're gonna put out to the side. You know, items not available at the time we submitted them. Okay, so we're, we're just try- trying to clarify so that we make sure we're giving you all the information. Okay, so that was kinda my opening, um.
The clock is fast, I just realized.
Nine oh two, Tom, when we started? And then we'll always note the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting, so in the minutes it'll capture that. Okay, so, do you wanna start with the policy items on the agenda?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so you guys requested this work session.
So, um, the competitive grant process with the last, on this town, the dirt series. Um, and the craft tourism initiatives, you wanna speak on those two items and the differences or?
Well, I wanna understand what you guys wanna talk about, any clarification from, because once again, when the meeting was requested, we guessed at what this discussion might be. So I could sit here and, as you well know, talk for a while.
Well, I think that.
Let's talk about what you wanna talk about.
This is just my impression leftover from the last, um, work session, that number one, we were wanting a more detailed outline from Juan. So we know what we're paying him for and when and what that includes, is that correct? Okay, I wasn't, uh, unclear about that, I, um. I don't know actually why it's back on, because we can't vote on it today anyway. But we would go forward in the next meeting to if he presents those documents, the breakdown, that's when it's voted on for funding, correct? Okay, so.
Well, let me clarify, because some of you have come to me separate from the meeting and this is why I wanted to get over and talk to you and I haven't talked to you, Tom, either, but separately. Camilla and Si were in City Hall and I had separate conversations trying to clarify, so. Let's talk about the, um, Juan's proposal. And let me do some history that Tom and Nancy wouldn't have been part of.
Can I, can I just say, um, just this? I think we rolled this out wrong.
Okay.
The, the twenty thousand dollars to give to a new, I think we, we dropped the ball. I think that we should've made a new grant form with some guidelines in it, and I think.
You're ahead of me, that's exactly where I was going.
I think that's where we should've started the entire process, is, is with that. And. I just, there's just some things in there that were not followed for Juan. That are in this one, that should be in a new one to, to do it right.
So you'd like Juan to respond to that form?
I, right, this is, and, and not, and not this form. This form I feel is a contract.
Right.
This form, this, this, this.
I totally agree.
This form is a grant application.
Everybody's on the same page.
For, for that.
But this, this board wasn't fully seated.
No.
It didn't have direction, but doesn't have policies.
No.
So we are starting from scratch.
Yeah.
Well, there was a policy that I was about to reference, but it was part of the two of you, and that was last October, we had a discussion about. Anyone who wants to come forward for sponsorship or dollars going through a competitive grant process rather than coming just individually to you. Cause the way it had been done before is if one of you ran into someone in the store and they inquired about tourism money, you'd say, yeah, get on the agenda and come. And then you'd entertain their, and the, and then another of you would run into someone else and they'd say, what about money? And you'd say, get on the agenda, I think that's, yes, that's the way it's been done for the past couple of years. In October, we talked about not doing that, but the two of you weren't here. And Juan wanted to come forward and it turned into a presentation for dollars. And so like you said, Tom, it should've maybe come through the competitive grant process and I think everybody agrees now.
Yeah.
That we're, you're gonna fund it, but it needs to come through the competitive grant process.
And I, my biggest thing too is I didn't read any of it, I hadn't had, and once I went home and read it, it was.
And I didn't realize at the beginning of the last meeting you hadn't read it.
No.
Until halfway through the discussion.
Right.
Right?
So, it, and this is a historical comment, quite honestly, I don't see how tourism has functioned in the past without a quorum.
Well, here's the way I see it is.
Do you, Tara?
Well, the quorum, we asked that question because we had four members for a long time, Carol Blacknick Burrows was not attending, we had four members. We never had a meeting where we didn't have three members there. And so when you have a board of five, and we had five seated for a long time, but we had one member that was absent for five or six months. As long as we had three members, we maintained a quorum, it's harder, boards with seven, a quorum is four. Boards with five, which you are, a quorum is three, and there's been some discussion about expanding your board over the time. And with the latest interests, that might be something you wanna think about for several reasons.
Right.
Three people making decisions is a very small number and that's really the way we operate in.
Well, and my point about making that comment is that, much to Tom's observation. That now we're trying to correct those things, but, uh, we're, we're, now we're gonna put our gears into reverse. So we can go forward.
Right.
But, um.
In a sense, in a sense, we're not, because he should've had a grant application.
But there wasn't one available.
Did he not?
I understood that he turned it in, so I don't know.
No, he's not turning it in.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's, that's just what I'm referring to, I'm, is, is that.
And the reason, I asked him about that contract and he said, well, because I don't have anything else to go on. Then he got the grant for it.
Well, then we'll, we'll just move forward in that sense, but on the art, on this one here, we heard them in November.
Yes.
Okay, so, what I've read in. In the guidelines is, they should've been known something eight weeks after we discussed it.
Right.
And now we're in February, we're something like sixteen weeks.
Right.
But we didn't have any money.
And we didn't have any money when we heard him in November.
But, but in January, it should've been resubmitted. So the eight weeks would've been, in, see now, those are the things that I'm seeing is, is.
Right, we need to tie up.
For us to, to kind of just really follow these. So that we're not come up against any kind of.
Questioning.
I, I don't wanna be questioned for anything, I, I wa- I want everything to be, you know, just right. Right by this, right by us, and right by the people that are applying for, whatever they're applying for and just.
I agree.
You know, and I, that's, that's the way, that's, that's what I want my turn to be.
And so the background to that too, just so that you guys know, yeah, I actually wrote that grant program years ago and submitted it and we approved it on the board. And so through the process with Jonathan, we stopped using it, at one point they wanted to just throw it out and say not even to use it at all. But it's what other cities use.
Right, and the reason RPM wasn't considered by staff as part of the competitive process, whether that was right or wrong. The reason it wasn't considered is the Craft Initiative closed and the state made two recommendations. One was the consult for the competitive bike race and the other is, we have been granted, and I got word last week, ten thousand dollars from them. For the purpose of using it, you'll remember from the end of Craft, we asked for it to use for a visitor profile study. To hire a consultant to do a study over the next year, to say, here is the actual visitors based on data that they've collected. So the state's gonna be supporting that on behalf of the Tourism Board, so for you new members, that was kind of the decision made by the. Um, the stakeholder group from Craft Initiative.
So if Craft is paying for their visioning, et cetera. Then, it, it, and thinking about this, you used a word that has just stuck with me, Tara.
Okay.
And you, you clearly pointed out the difference between.
Well, and before you say that, Craft, you said Craft was paying for their visioning, Craft's not.
The state is.
Okay, the state is paying the ten thousand for the visitor profile and recommending RPM as a way to achieve the other initiative, okay.
Okay, but.
What did I say that stuck?
You used the word sponsorship and they never really looked at it that way.
Okay.
I looked at it that, uh, let me just back up and go back to Studio Six.
Okay.
Okay, I believe the funding that was spent with Studio Six was, um, not vetted properly. And I understand how and why that happened.
Right.
But I do believe.
And I agree with that statement.
Yes, and I do believe, thank you, that, um, as tourism now is, uh, holding a tighter rein on their funding. And we're, we're vetting funding requests more tightly. I would like to see RPM do their visioning, planning, strategic work on their own. Without funding and then when they know what they want to do, come back and regret, uh, request grant funding.
And I think that's, that's appropriate if that's what you decide to do. My issue with the last meeting, and once again, I didn't realize you hadn't read the proposals. My issue is that there were two completely different things and I think we're on the same page now.
Well, I.
But I wanna clarify that I've, I've never said I thought you needed to do that. I've laid out where it came from and what the benefits might be.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, the original proposal that I received, I believe in December, was a three-year study. With twenty-eight thousand and now this is a shorter timeframe, which is fine, um, for less money. But I do personally don't think it's feasible or wise to pay a company to vision.
So I think the city is.
But if the city wants to pay that fifteen thousand, which.
Okay, so if the Tourism Board decides not to pay that, then that's fine. We would go back to RPM and say the Tourism Board has declined to participate, the city may do it on their own or they may not do it at all. That, that's a decision separate from the board.
Here's what I.
Staff has never pushed you toward that. The downside, and I think Si brings this up, is we were awarded the Craft Initiative, we went through the initiative, it came out with the two recommendations. It's one of those recommendations, so there is the world of exactly what you're talking about. You look at your dollars and you look at your pennies and you look at how they're spent, but there's also the world of relationships and associations.
I, and I understand that.
And, and as members, I would expect five diverse opinions about this.
Well, but.
And my, I guess the thing I want you to walk away with is staff is not saying you have to do this.
Well, but staff is, staff is one set of opinions and tourism is its other set of opinions.
That's right, that's why you're seated here to spend that money.
Right, so, so we were, I, maybe I misunderstood, but we were supposed to get an email saying that the city would give fifteen thousand dollars for this study?
So I did not send the email because you requested the work session and my conversation was, do I still do the memo or do we talk about it at the work session?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm here to, to work through the details, I'm happy to put that in writing.
Here's.
After this.
Here's my.
I wanted to see where we're standing.
Well, first of all, um, I, I just wanna say that, um, any business owner is always visioning.
Right.
How to move forward, how to spend their money, what do we do to grow?
Right.
So if, uh, the state wants to endorse RPM to do that study, then I think that's fine, more information. If the city wants to pay them fifteen thousand dollars additionally to vision, et cetera, et cetera, that's up to the city.
Yeah.
But I am a little weak need when it comes to tourism, taking their dollars and replicating some of the same mistakes that happened to Studio Six.
So what I would say that is, is, and Tom, I think you were gonna say something.
Here's what I like to say on, on that. I, I, I would like to have studies like this, I would.
Even though we have more than we need?
I, I don't know that we have more than we need right now.
Well, Camilla will tell you.
You know.
I have a lot of studies.
We have stuff, some that are going on, but any study. What I would like to see is not the money coming from the twenty thousand dollars that we set aside for a new. A new event. Or taken away from the money that we give, that we're awarded to someone who wants. Money to put, to, to do an event.
Right.
I don't want money to be taken from that, because I think those, the people that come to us are struggling anyway.
So where would you suggest it would come from?
I suggest that we take it, either we lower the amount that we keep in reserve and set aside so much of that money. For research and surveys.
So let me clarify a point there, you don't have the ability to go into your reserve, you have to go to council and request a budget amendment, but you can do that.
Yes.
You could authorize it to come from reserve and before the end of the year, you would go to council and request a budget amendment to pull money from reserve.
This way, this way we have money to partner.
Right.
Additionally, though, Tom, the city is going to pay them fifteen thousand dollars, so we will get the data.
Well, not if, not if you don't do the ten, I mean, we don't have the twenty-five, no, no.
No, no, we are.
Very clearly, there were two things that came out of Craft Initiative, one is the ten thousand dollars the state is providing for a visitor profile. That's not that at all, visitor profile, it's a totally separate thing.
This company.
Right.
Who is it?
Well, we'll have to do an RFP. That's not gonna.
For another study, for a visitor profile, which is what the Craft Initiative decided, so us legislating.
That's, that's whole, something totally separate.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
But here's, this is, this is, this is where I would like us to go and I don't know if anybody's on board with, in, in what I just explained. Because here's what I see about the RPM and maybe you can clarify it and understanding. So we buy into twenty-five thousand dollars for the vision. And then the next scope of it is gonna cost a spot and then the implementation is gonna cost a spot. So if we're in seventy-five thousand dollars and we're not even up and running on nothing yet. I think something like this, we need partners, we need partners and we need money set aside and not taken from people who want the money.
What Tommy's saying is set aside, so if we go back to the Welcome Center, goes back to the state of Colorado. So now we're not paying the Welcome Center money. Can we take some of that money that was going to the Welcome Center and set that aside and say, now we have, we're gonna set this instead of throwing it back in?
You can do several things, so hypothetically, if the Welcome Center funding comes back in, and I do wanna update you on that at the end of the meeting, if it comes back in.
We don't have that subsidy, we just don't have the payout.
Thirty thousand this year that you, that you've budgeted toward the Welcome Center that would be freed up to spend another way.
Take twenty-five.
You could take a portion of that, you could also do what Tom is suggesting and you could take ten thousand out of reserve. I'm just saying, if you do that, then you need to turn around and request a council amendment to allow you to pull that out of reserve.
What, what I wanna know is, is if everybody's in consensus with that, because I think we're always gonna have studies.
This is, I, we're always gonna have studies, but this is my, my point and I think I told everybody, it's amazing how all of a sudden everybody is. Bicycle, 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 and there's several different groups that are doing bicycle, bicycle, bicycle. And it's just, are we doing an overload? Are we stepping on each other's toes? Are we, not stepping on each other's toes, but are we doing repetitive things? Tim Kressler's working his butt off for the trails, but also bicycling. And are we, are we going in there with a gusto, maybe this is different, because maybe he will work with Tim, maybe Tim will work with him. Maybe Juan will work and I'm giving their opinions, come to the workshops to hear, to hear everybody. But are we doing repetitive things between these group, Cog is doing a, a review.
Camilla in a different way, back fifteen, twenty years ago, whenever Trinidadia started, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago?
Yeah.
If Neil, and I understand Neil was the guy who brought the talent at the time, right?
Right.
If Neil hadn't been involved with Trinidadia, have been able to do what it's done, in the inception, no? And what was it about, what was it about that?
He's the one that started, he's the one that brought it.
He had those connections, right?
You don't want another music festival, that's what you're saying.
Right.
Oh, oh, that's not what I meant, so, so.
Well, you're saying being repetitive.
Well, but, but.
Well, in the sense of what just looks in front of us now.
Several different people working together and it just seems like, can we bring them together?
And that's what I've always thought of, collaboration.
Here's the problem, or, or not the problem, here's the clarification to your, what you're saying. Juan is bringing in national sponsorships that do nothing but bike races, mountain bike events, that's all they do. They're coming from California, they're coming from Denver, they're coming from Utah, it's going to put us on the national biking route. Now what Tim is doing, yes, he does trails, but he doesn't have sponsors that are going to be bringing biking events like this one.
And there's the clarification of the difference of the two. You know, so, so, my take is when I talked to Juan is, he, and I, and I kinda got disheartened about it is. He didn't care to work with RPM at all, that's what he stated to us and then, and then I said, well, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for us all to work together to make it for Trinidad, to make it a better thing, and then he said, I'm willing to work with them. You know, and, and then I fell.
Well, there's background to it that he doesn't wanna bring public.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference, we're all working towards a goal to bring something to Trinidad.
Trying.
And we all have to work together, you know, you know, or tried to, you know, but he, he did say he would, you know, he, he did, he did. Come out and say, I, I'm willing to work with them.
But, and, yes.
You know, so, so that eased me. You know, because that's what I want, I want, I want, I want, I want things to happen in Trinidad, but I want us all to be able to work together, just like I want us to meet with. Different committees, because if we're on the same boat with, uh, Parks and Rec, if we're on the same boat with Cog. They're doing, uh, I think that study going up Highway twelve, you know, and that's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, s- thing that they're doing. We, we just need all get on the same page.
Well, I would just, Camilla made a comment, or somebody made a comment on behalf of Camilla about having a lot of studies. So, y- you know, I, I came from the private sector, I've been in the public sector for a while. The way we've gotten the money that we've gotten for things is we have a study, I mean, you can't get anything if you don't have a study, a sponsor. You can't get anything like that, so, um, what, what I'm understanding from RPM, and, and they've got a different approach than Juan. And I'm not saying one approach or the other is correct. But what I'm saying and hearing from the state and from RPM is that what the, what these planning stages do is they lay the groundwork to go get. The types of events like they're doing with the Colorado Classic, I mean, this is not, it, they did this exact same process when they put the Colorado Classic together. Which is now kind of a million dollar sponsored event, I mean, with bands and, and, and food. And, and the entire experience of the race. What Trinidad can do, what we can afford to do and where we can go, I, I don't know, this is the difficult thing about being you. For staff, we can give you all of our opinions and we can give you the research, but in the end, you have to look at these and decide where you think the dollars are best spent. And what I hear Nancy saying is, she's kinda forming her opinion about whether the dollars are best spent and all of you are gonna need to do that. Is the dollars spent in doing some planning but not taking it out of the grant money the way Tom's suggesting? Is it maybe not doing the planning at all and just doing the sponsorship? If you wanna take money out of another pot, then do you wanna go ahead and, and execute the ten thousand? And then see what happens with the Welcome Center, that's a possibility like Camilla's saying. In the end, if you have to do a budget amendment, you've got the ten thousand in, in reserve. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's possible, whatever you decide to do, or you could say, no, we don't wanna invest in that, because it might be seventy-five thousand dollars. And you don't have anything, and I can't or won't sit here and tell you what it's gonna be past this proposal right here.
That's my problem.
I, I won't, I, I, I don't think staff is equipped to tell you what it's gonna be next, because we've said in the same presentation that you've said in. So you have to ask yourself if the ten thousand dollar investment is worth finding out.
I think it is, you know, I, I, I wa- I want to. I wanna do things right.
Well, that, we all do, Tom, but.
And I think this is a path of doing right.
Imagine you're standing at a craft table, okay, you've got a pile of money here that's already your, your budgeted money. And you're gonna roll the dice, you may lose all that, because you gotta put a whole bunch of money into doing a, a study, but we don't know the cost of. That's what this scenario is.
And, and here's another part of my question is to RPM is, have they done this before, have they done this?
Yeah, they have, they have.
Do we have any of the results of what they've done?
Yeah, the Colorado Classic is the result.
It's a bike race.
It's a professional bike race.
I know that it's landed up being in a city with a larger population, population than ours, you know, but.
Done things in Fruta.
Yeah.
So, so here they have a credible record of to what they're putting together.
Yeah, I'm not saying that they don't, my question and concern is, how much? What are the dollars?
See, and this is where I want, I want, I want.
Just inserting that is, it's not just how much dollars, but it's how much we're expected, because what I see in their track record is. They bring private dollars with them, so they bring Troy, the bike shop owner in Fruta with them. They bring the sponsorships with them, so the overall cost might be seventy-five, but the proposal to the city might be ten or fifteen or twenty of that. That's what I would say their history is, I can't guarantee you that's where you're gonna be anywhere.
That, that's where my stomach rolls.
Right.
And, and see, here's where I feel is, is by us setting aside money without taking from anything else. We do have monies for things like this, with partners. We have a partner now, the city giving fifteen thousand and us giving ten. Well, we're not giving as much as the city, but what we're gonna get out of this.
Maybe we should bring RPM back to. Why would, why would the city, why would the city do this?
Why would this, that's the question, and why would the city, this next planning not do it again?
So the city council has, the, the city council has adopted in the past couple of years, kind of a progressive attitude when it comes to this, from a staff perspective. This conversation is nothing compared to this, to, to the example I'm gonna put to you. In February of twenty sixteen, we said to council. Here's a contract to execute with art space for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're gonna pay for the pre-development of a project, we don't know if a project's gonna come out of it. We can get a hundred and fifty thousand from Betcher Foundation today, and we can ask Dola for half of the rest, but there's no guarantee. So you're gonna sign this contract and commit that you will put five hundred thousand toward the possibility of a project. And staff is gonna go work on your behalf to bring, cut that five hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty. And they did, and we're closing in two weeks on a nineteen million dollar project, so why would council? Say, let's put fifteen thousand dollars in to find out, five years ago? We wouldn't do that, five years ago, we had an opportunity to apply for a regional tourism grant that would have given us. The twenty-five million to buy Fisher's Peak, but it would have cost us eighty thousand to apply. And that council, which was led by Bernadette at the time, didn't have the will to do that. And to do an eighty thousand dollar application, that I tell you now, we would have gotten twenty-five million and would have had Fisher's Peak in twenty fourteen. Under contract, and we did the meetings in Denver for it, we did the meetings with the trust, and we did the meetings with Evelyn. But council didn't have the foresight in twenty fourteen to do the eighty thousand dollars, the council that came after that.
Had the foresight.
Started taking those types of chances, now, now.
The caveat though, Tara is, is they saw marijuana money, and the risk became more, became minimal.
Well, we've also bought the Fox Theater.
That's right.
We bought the Fox Theater, we've made an investment of seventy-five thousand without a plan, so. So that answers the question of why the city would say, well, if tourism is bullish about twenty-five thousand. We'll bring fifteen to the table, if they'll bring ten, but this is about a race, and it's about tourism, so from a city perspective. If the board doesn't wanna go that direction, then I don't know if the city should without you, I think.
I'm, like I say, the only, the only thing I have about RPM is the funds. And the way I would like to redo the funds, that's, that's the only thing I have about this, other than that, I'm for this. Because the city's on board with this.
I don't think we could bring a partner that has a, a more proven track record on a statewide basis, I just don't think we could. And it's not, and, and, and unfortunately, this discussion, it seems like it's almost been Juan versus RPM, and I regret that. I regret that so much, because Nancy is.
Separated.
Okay, that's good, because to Nancy's point, Juan is so valuable, and he has national sponsors, and he has. His connections, and he wants to do this, and he's leading that initiative here.
Here's where my, here's where my separation comes from both of them, he's up and running.
He is.
So that's, 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 that's my separation from that, so.
One is vision and one is action.
That's it, one is vision and one is action.
But, okay, just bear with me here for a minute, the last meeting we had. This was going to be twenty thousand, the city was gonna put in fifteen, and we were gonna put in five.
Ten.
Now, but we didn't have the discussion at the last meeting about craft, knowing that it was another ten thousand. It was just what our obligation was, how much is this going to cost us?
I don't recall the last meeting, I thought when I was here a week ago, it was twenty-five thousand for RPM. It was ten from you and fifteen from the city.
I don't recall it that way, but like I said.
I never heard about craft putting money in, I never did that, but I did thought that it was only twenty, to be honest with you.
Yes, it was twenty, twenty-five. Was five for us, and you said you would get fifteen from the city.
No, I were twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and it was ten from us.
I agree, I agree with you. You know, so I, maybe I.
Okay, so the, so let's just.
So it is twenty-five.
So let's say it's ten thousand, let's say it's ten thousand, I wanna go back to. The state money for the Welcome Center, because that seems to be where we're going to get this extra money. But my understanding, and I'm late to this budget game, I, it would be helpful to have a full budget.
Yeah, we do think that.
Okay.
What is it that you need?
Our budget.
The once a month budget.
Yes.
So we got what we spent, but we don't know where we're at.
Yeah.
You need it to date then.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And I would like it once a month.
Yeah, so we should have it once a month. The sixty-five thousand that we would be getting from the city, or the state, for the Welcome Center. Doesn't that pay salaries?
That, that's actually.
No, it actually comes broken into four boxes, one is salary, one is operations.
Right.
One is travel and professional development, to the things Marty's required, and the fourth is volunteer enhancement.
Okay, so the first two, salaries and maintenance.
Operation, right.
How much is that, and how much do we have left over?
I can only, the sixty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-eight is broken by the state, I do not know if it'll be that amount. I do not know if they will, uh, it could be nothing, I mean, we don't have anything in writing. And that's what we're trying to seek right now, every commitment we have is verbal, we're trying to seek something in writing. Um, we're waiting to see where the governor stands on tourism, and they're waiting to see. Where their money's gonna stand on tourism, he's putting together his budget now.
So if we commit to this thinking that.
We won't, and let me just follow that up with, it'll be May before we have that in writing.
We commit to RPM to give them the monies they're requesting. Thinking we're gonna get it out of the state funding, which we don't know how much we're gonna get, or when we're gonna get it.
I don't think you can commit it thinking that you're gonna get that, I think to Camilla's point, it might, it might loosen up. But, um, I think you have to commit it assuming you're coming from reserve, you're coming from advertising and marketing. Or you're coming for local festival fu- funding, I see the fourth one is outside contracts, you've got four buckets.
I do, and I.
One of the good things is that we are showing on the state map.
Can you get a copy of the budget Marty for us right now?
I can tell you that you have seventy thousand in outside contracts.
I, I'm visual, Tara, I need to see.
I think Tony's giving it to you right there, thank you.
So there's three twenty-five of total revenue, including the fifty from the city. Okay, the expenses for salary for the Welcome Center for the year is a hundred and two, or basically, how much is that a, a month?
I, I don't know, are you going with where the buckets can come from, Nancy, is that it?
Salary, operations, volunteer, travel.
So if you go down below Welcome Center to the tourism section, that's where, that's where you would come from, is the tourism section.
Okay, so, the trial, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, the trolley funds.
Yeah, not the trolley, there's a section called tourism, it should have a line item for advertising and marketing, outside contracts.
It's, this, this is just kind of a breakdown of what it's not.
Print a copy, please.
I will go print a copy, may I see what you've got there? Uh, this is what was available, that's the budget discussion.
Even right, correct.
No, it is correct, it's just, it's for a discussion five months ago.
Yeah.
So the one thing that is good, guys, is that on the state maps that they put out for this year, they're, they're now, they, they have, uh, it's the State of Colorado Welcome Centers. And they have a star again by Trinidad.
And, and I, I, I've seen, I, but I don't believe in spending money that you don't know what you have or when you're getting it.
No, you're, you're right, and we should have one.
Do you?
No, but here's the one thing I feel about this, is, is if we take money from the reserve, or we get money back from the Welcome Center. We always have money to do studies to, um, partner with the city, partner with anybody who's doing it. That always takes this off of the table, as to, we're us doing a survey.
So.
Like Juan's deal is up and running, like I said, you know, so, so see, there's my separation of the two.
This is a done deal, I'm just talking about this.
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're always gonna have somebody coming up and wanting to do a study, and that's gonna be up to us to decide, do we have a partner? Is it feasible, do we wanna do this? Here's all the re- recommendations, is they have this bike race in Springs.
Yeah, it's, and it's not, it's everything, it's music, it's festivals, it's, you know, it's everything.
So it's, it's better for us to spend our money and have all of these things when we need it. It's, it's, it's just having it in separate places, money for this comes out of here. Money for new festivals comes out of here.
Yeah, I understand.
Regular grant money comes from out of here. Here, and, and, and see, then, there's not such a big thing of us trying to. Connect these two together, and saying they don't wanna work together, they don't wanna do this, has, has nothing to do with that.
Has nothing to do with this, this is a done deal. I just wanna see where we're spending money for this, and how much are we spending?
Have the city on us to give us more than we're giving, but it's ours.
Right.
Is a good thing.
So, just while this is printing, I'm just pulling you the budget, the actual budget, city council adopted. Let's say, we advance the conversation with Kathy Ritter, and I'm attempting before I leave. To get something in writing from her, committing to funding, she may not be able to give us the amount, but committing that we will get a tranche of funding, okay? Let's say we get nothing, let's just say the worst case scenario, we get nothing, then it's gonna be incumbent upon this board. To meet with city council, to discuss that fifty thousand and whether or not that continues. I don't know why this is printing this size, oh, okay. So if, let's say the worst case scenario, or talking about money.
When you say not getting any funding, you mean from the state?
From the state, let's say the state doesn't commit.
It would be actually them refunding the Welcome Center, right?
It's a, it's a contract, where they, every quarter, they reimburse you expenses of the Welcome Center, up to and not to exceed. Sixty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-eight was the old one. Now Nancy, you still don't have the page that you need, but I wanna give you the full budget, that's page one, there's page two.
And you guys were given this in January, but.
And I have it somewhere in this file.
They all have it somewhere.
At the next meeting, Marty, everybody had to pay their lodging tax by the end of January, or February fifteenth.
So let me talk about finances, we can't give you January until the first of March, she hasn't closed it completely. We won't be able to give you third quarter until next month, so, we're, we're not behind, we're actually on schedule. To give you the finances, so in March, you're gonna get January, and you'll get the fourth quarter, in April, you're gonna get February, and it'll go forward like that. I don't have it for any department yet, for January.
Two different things, what I meant Tara was that, um, the end of December closed, and all the hotels had sent in their money by January, is what those ones.
So we haven't closed the end of December yet, we won't close that until March.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So the buckets that you're looking at are, I'll get it to everybody, and then we'll walk through this. You're welcome. So if you'll go to that third page, and you'll look at the expense description under tourism, it's Department forty-eight hundred. There are the buckets that are budgeted. Now, if you go over to the right side on page one twenty-seven, where it says tourism fund, oh wait, no, 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 back to one twenty-six at the very bottom. You see that we're expecting a total expenditure from this year, we're budgeting two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. If you go back to the very first page, I'm looking for what will be the fund balance.
The three hundred thousand twelve dollars?
Yeah, these are budget, this is a, this, this unfortunately report, and we can get it for you, is not your, it doesn't. Include the fund balance, that, the reserve that, that Tom is referencing.
Tara, when was that reserve fund balance established, was, was it with us in the very?
Very beginning, the very first lodging tax that was collected, so what we've got here is the budget, that's what I went and grabbed, I didn't get the financial.
And that's kinda how that, so the funding, we put so much away, that's how we originally.
What, what, what is that, what has that?
Right now, our fund balance is about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. It's not reflected in the budget, but I'll get, I'll get you the financial.
So why, why is that, as a hundred and twenty-six thousand?
So, uh, here, and you'll remember this discussion, and we had it in maybe October, November, when we had all those policy discussions. And what I was doing in October, November is I was recognizing things from my perspective that I thought were gaps. And one was that you should be funding everything through a grant cycle, the other is, you have no fiscal policy. As a board, the tourism board in all these years has never established a fiscal policy. So there have been times that the fund balance was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and there have been times the fund balance was forty thousand dollars. What a fiscal policy would do is it would be a very in-depth thoughtful discussion between the five of you. About what you think is appropriate to keep. You would adopt that by a resolution, and it would mean that future tourism boards couldn't go below that amount. Without actually changing the policy. So it's about fiscal management, because you're operating on an estimated lodging tax. Let's say La Quinta burns down, it's not going to, but let's say it does, okay. So you've got a budget of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand in expenses and an expected revenue of three hundred thousand, and I can tell you, if La Quinta burned down. Even though she's rebuilding, you're gonna have a year, year and a half there, where you're gonna miss a significant portion of your fund. That's why you have the fiscal policy there, to talk about that, reserves. So, whenever you decide to do this, if you wanna do it before I leave, we can start that conversation next week, but. Or you can put it into the future, you need to talk about a fiscal policy, and you need to adopt it by resolution. Marty will have the form for what that looks like, but it needs to be, what is your reserve balance that you're gonna maintain? Do you wanna keep money set aside for partnerships, or for things beyond that, I mean, what are your, what do you want to do with it?
I do believe that, you know, when you look at a city. You're always gonna have these, you're, there, there's one on Main Street now, isn't there? They're doing one on an inventory of the Main Street building.
Yes, they are.
So, you know, there's, there's always gonna be these, so if the money is set aside. For partnerships with the city, with Cog, or whoever comes on with this, at least we have a, a place to go.
So, um, to the reason we printed this out, to Nancy's point, is if you go to page one twenty-six and you look at your buckets for that ten thousand. You've got outside contract services, that's a possibility. You've got advertising and publications, that's a possibility, billboards are not, those are committed, those are committed funds. The three thousand in travel, training, and mileage has to be there, if you wanna attend anything, that's for the board members, that's not for staff. Four thousand for office supplies, right now, we're digging into that pretty deeply with postage and different things like that, so. And then there's seventy of local festival funding, which you can spend on locals, you kind of tentatively said fifty of that was for existing, and twenty was for new.
So what is outside contract services, how is that defined?
So it defines, we put that there, so you could do anything, if you wanna hire someone to do a study, you can do it. If you wanna hire someone to be your marketing entity, and do your print publications, or do your online publications, that's what that's for. If you choose to do an RFP at some point in time, and, and I do want clarification on that, what you want, it's that bucket right there.
Yeah, so, um, the three areas that we could pull money from. Or a portion of, say, we took five out of advertising, or some from outside contract services. That's, that is what I can see that we would do for RPM, but I don't want to rely on the state for salaries. To do this.
What I would say in that area is the billboards, if you'll put a star by that. The travel and training, if you'll put a star by that, and the office supplies are not something you can pull from. Everything else is yours, and it's not committed.
Here's something on, on the advertising, we didn't accept, but, we didn't accept a proposal from, uh, US, USA Today. Which was over twenty-five thousand dollars.
That would have been that line item.
You know, so, so there's, there's those monies that we have, but. I, myself, I would just like to establish. That money set aside, whether we do a resolution and go, save, we save. Make sure there's always a hundred thousand dollars in there, we have twenty-six thousand dollars to set aside. Make sure there's always a hundred thousand dollars in there. We have twenty-six thousand dollars to set aside. We're still leaving.
Well, that's another topic.
Right. But I'm just, I'm just giving a scenario.
And and a background scenario, like before the, well, the city ended up paying off the trolley, but before we got the trolley, we were saving extra money every year so that the initial down payment for the trolley was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something that we had money in reserves. If in the future we wanna do a signage outside Trinidad or anything that has been talked about, we would save money in reserves so that we could finally do it. Cause all those projects are huge down.
So to try and bring it together, we've got a couple of, we've got a couple of conversations. We've got a fiscal policy conversation. And it sounds like there's enough interest. You want that back on the agenda to talk about. Okay, that's one. The second is um what is the available funding if you decide to do RPM and you vote on it at the next meeting, which is next Wednesday, what bucket? You'll not only need to make a motion to vote on it, but you're gonna need to tell us where that's coming from.
Well, and this, Marty, this would go back to you. We have decided and voted on the funding that we did wanna spend. Like we took less advertising dollars from K R D O than they proposed. I think it was fourteen thousand. So I would like to comparative line item, if you could do the twenty nineteen budget, plus what we've committed to leaving, showing us a reserve, okay?
Do you think you have all the information to do that, Marty?
You should.
I should, yes.
Okay.
Because we have committed to certain advertising dollars and we've stayed under. Yes, we stayed, and we stayed under their proposed and we took some of the advertising dollars, but it's lessened, so we have some money left over.
So what Nancy, I hear you saying is on that five thousand and one line item, advertising and publications, you don't wanna just assume twenty-fives there. You wanna see what the commitments are and what the balances, what the balances, okay?
Because if we have.
After those, just a subtraction.
Yes, after those commitments, if we have slush, then that slush we can move around.
And what happened to the tourism board last year is when Jonathan left, this was all committed, so there was nothing.
Right.
So um.
And I don't wanna get into that.
We don't wanna get into that again and we can't over commit because economic development's picking up thirty-five thousand of tourism dollars that were spent based on Jonathan's commitments to close out last year. And I'm I'm doing that that paperwork to Cheryl this week. So that's why I know the year's not closed yet. And the reason is we didn't do a budget amendment in November to say tourism overspent by thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that won't happen again. This is kind of a give me because the economic development budget can't do it next time. It's Jonathan's salary that was budgeted.
Right.
Is how we're paying for that.
So to Tom's uh discussion, um I think there will be some slush funds left over from what we had budgeted to what we have committed to that we could put towards RPM. But to take um to take funding before we even know um the state, the state contribution to the welcome center, I I wanna leave that completely aside.
Which will just replenish whatever we have in the end.
Okay, so our.
If we do get money back.
So our agenda, our agenda items are gonna be fiscal policy. It's gonna be state funding and here's that conversation because I wanna go ahead and have this now because if I'm not here, I wanna remind you that if we don't get state funding and we may not know till May, it's imperative that you talk with city council. I want you to look at page one twenty-seven. When you look at the center manager salary, you're gonna see twenty-six percent of Marty's salary is paid out of tourism. That's twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. I'll remind you, the city's picking up the rest of that salary, picking it up out of the general fund. And you have that committed for nineteen and you have it committed for twenty. And so if you don't get welcome center funding from the state, you have to have a conversation with city council.
Right.
About are they going to have an ongoing commitment of that fifty thousand to continue.
Twenty-one on.
On. On, if you don't get state funding until you can either get state funding or never get it.
Right.
So I just wanna keep that in your mind so that you're not going along and all of a sudden you're sitting here doing budget a year from now and the city goes, well, we're we're not giving you that fifty thousand and now.
Can you put that on as a reminder for us?
So that's a continuing conversation. So fiscal policy, state funding, city funding. And then you've got the items you're considering now for your voting, voting meeting. And then we want financials today, committed, what's committed and what the balance is on.
So my understanding is that we're going to take the money from the slush that we have.
Well, we wanna see how much.
We wanna see how much, but that's the possibility.
There's some slush and then we can, there's other, like the outside contract services. Say if we have five thousand in slush, we could take that plus five thousand out of outside contract services for our ten thousand contribution.
Right, and that preserves your seventy thousand for the community.
And that's, and that's my, what I wanna do is I wanna preserve that.
And then keep in mind that with Jonathan's commitment sunsetting, right now, we are doing no advertising. So you're gonna need to decide how you wanna approach that.
Right.
That's why we set that budget aside.
We go back to the thing of.
Other than these few commitments you've made.
The thing that he laid out for us.
Andrew.
Andrew laid out for us. And I think those are the things that we should follow is his recommendations as to.
And now that Nancy and Joey are here, I think you need to have some serious discussion about if you've got sixty-five thousand for outside contracts and twenty-five for marketing, once Marty gives you the balance of KD, K R D O and or K C R T and Mountains and Maces and these few commitments you have, you're gonna have a balance there. And you need a philosophical decision about which direction to go so that Marty can then turn around. Do you wanna work with an advertising specialist? Do you wanna do it yourselves? I mean.
Well, I, we um we have the RFP discussion that
Yeah, I.
Uh that is part of website maintenance and social media, so you know.
So I'd almost suggest before you have the RFP discussion, that you actually decide as a board that that's where you want your money to go. In other words, have you had the discussion before that? We have, but Nancy and Joey weren't part of that discussion.
And I think we should start over possibly on all of that. You know, this way everybody's brought in.
Do you wanna do TV? Do you wanna do radio? Do you wanna do print? Do you wanna do online only?
Some of that's on the spreadsheet.
Right, right. And I think uh like I recommended, uh I think a couple of meetings before that like everybody that comes on, kinda be brought up to date with all the information, like the recommendations from Andrew. The just the ordinances and and everything, you know, that way they have a packet of everything.
Of everything.
You know.
The reason I think it's important is if you do an RFP for social media management and you bring that on and your buck is pretty small here and you're putting it all toward that. And then some great print advertising or TV advertising thing comes along and Joey or Nancy say, hey, that's great. Well, you don't have any money. They didn't get to participate in the discussion about. Cause once you commit to this, it's not like you can change this in three months. You need a strategy that commits you out for how do you wanna market Trinidad for the next thirty-six months? What media do you wanna use to do that? Is radio effective? Do you wanna do that?
What, let me ask you a sideline. We've talked about expenses, but what are the projections of Si and Carol, I guess, as you guys this? What are the projections for uh travelers in this room? Which may increase our tourism revenues?
Uh I think the budget numbers are pretty darn close for what they think it's gonna be. We've had a really slow, all the hotels have had a slow January, but a really good February, so I.
But going into say spring, summer, fall?
Um it's really kinda sketchy. The whole, the whole quarter from Albuquerque to Denver right now is less traffic than state of Colorado's ever seen. If you look online right now, you will see the um the La Quintas in Albuquerque and downtown uh and Las Vegas, they're running sixty-nine, seventy-nine dollar rates. The brand new La Quinta in Colorado Springs is running a seventy-nine dollar rate, which means that their occupancy is very low. So we did comparisons with a few other brands. All brands are low right now, which tells me the whole quarter's slow.
What, so what is the state saying or your industry saying why, uh, cause we've noticed it too.
Yeah.
Why the tourists or the travelers are down? Is there a reason?
Um well, the one, the number one reason in the state of Colorado that I know of for sure was because of federal funding in January with cuts.
The government shutdown.
Yeah, the government shutdown. So last year, we had two hundred and seventy-four government rate rooms in uh in in January. This January, we had thirteen. So you know, that was, that's a huge thing. It's like an offset that the TV, and everybody doesn't realize, cause they have off shoe businesses that um spent, you know, that restaurants and other things that they go out to eat for and stuff. So that was our biggest hit in January.
We're gonna know fourth quarter by the end of March. We'll have fourth quarter numbers.
We are really excited about seeing what March is gonna happen, the whole like twenty-five quarter for that reason. The last three, four days, we've, we've zoomed up pretty quickly.
While spring break starts.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to factor in if maybe.
Absolutely right.
You know.
You're absolutely right. That's the way we've always looked at it.
Revenue dollars.
I'm concerned that rates are low, so then tourism, the lodging taxes are low all along the quarter and that's the way it runs, so. Yeah.
So one of the things that I think has not been done well and that is this conversation you're having and the financials and looking at where the monies, I think Si individually has kinda tracked that, but understanding the financial picture of the fund more and more and more about it. And I just can't speak to the way tourism was managed before. Marty certainly can't speak to the way tourism was managed before.
Right.
We recognize that that's it. I recognize on our end that these aren't systems that are in place that we can just plug ourselves into. They've gotta be created because it's just never been given to you. It's just never been provided.
And what I like to see is a new beginning.
But I think you should understand it's never been provided to us either. So here we are managing your day-to-day business and not really having access to that information. I mean, so just be patient with us as we're trying to to give you things, cause it's not like Marty can just go down and log into something and have it. She's gonna have to get that information from people and create that relationship. But you have a right to it. And we will request that on your behalf and we'll use Si if we need help with that. But just understand, we recognize this is a downfall of managing the the marketing. Because before you can even have an idea of how you wanna market for thirty-six months, you really need to understand what you're talking about.
Right.
If the state comes through with money for the welcome center, that will loosen stuff up. I still think, my personal opinion is you get the city to commit to continuing that fifty thousand every year. From the general fund to tourism, I think there's a general thought that if you get the state funding, that's gonna go away. That only nets you fifteen thousand additional dollars. I think this is something that you've gotta con- constantly negotiate with. And you've gotta be able to say, we can do this if you give us this, but if you don't give us this, we're not gonna be able to accomplish this.
And I think the path needs to be laid out. But one recommendation I'd like to make for is, is if we could have a a drawer in the file cabinet here for each one of the meetings that we do have, that way we can always go back to the last meeting.
Three months ago or something.
Because there, we're always looking for something.
Okay.
But we don't, but we don't have that.
We need a comprehensive paper file.
Right, this way if uh it's in file, that data, the information that was in there, that we can always refer back to.
Let's talk about whether we do that in physical or digital form.
Well, what I, what I wrote down was to establish a binder with all past agendas and minutes and
There you go.
And a packet with.
That would, that would be here. This way we can, uh just like the budget now, you have to go, you know, this way we we always have a referral.
Do you want to designate someone to work with Marty and I on creating a financial form in like the next week or so, while I'm here and can still contribute to that? Do you wanna designate one of you to come in and work with us? Cause we can sit down and work up what we think is smart, but I, I'm not gonna be here for your reaction. I mean.
And I think this is a a um a good thing because then it's setting us up for down the road and you could give us the information that you have.
Prior to Jonathan used to have a form.
Okay.
So yeah, prior to Jonathan used to have a form.
Typical, that's gone. Um it is, Nancy, do you wanna work with us on that? Do you have some ideas about what you wanna see?
Sure.
So what we will commit.
Tom and I can.
Okay, there can be two of you, Tom and Nancy.
Come on, Tom.
An an hour and a half?
Okay.
Uh next week, sometime. I'm here every day but Friday. So an hour and a half sometime next week. And we'll either meet, we'll probably meet in my office, Marty. It can't be a Friday, but it can be any other day next week and we'll let's sit down and I'll show you what I've got and then you tell me if it's easy to read. I don't, it may not take an hour and a half, but if we can get the form agreed to,
Right.
then we'll plug it in and at least two of you will have kinda said this is works for us.
Right. And what I'm imagining, what we're, we're saying is that we wanna say budget is thirty-one thousand eighteen dollars. We've spent seventeen thousand dollars. There's fourteen thousand dollars left there.
Right, 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 right.
And then what we'll probably do when we get that form, we might even ask Cheryl and Everett if she's available to sit in.
That would be my idea.
So that we would understand from her to all of us of when we can actually expect those numbers available. So that you're not asking Marty for something in February that's not really available till March, right? Okay.
And Tom, I think there was one other thing we're talking with you last, we needed to talk about and finish talking about the maps. Did you wanna discuss that?
Well, my, my understanding is is
We were gonna buy the map.
City has the maps, right? Who owns the map?
The map?
The, the.
The tri- the Viking map, the county road map.
No, that I don't know. I always thought you were talking about Hes Arts Downtown map.
No, I think Tim Kersler was talking about the map, but he doesn't have.
Who owns the map?
He developed the map.
He developed the map.
Tim Kersler just developed the map.
Okay.
Of.
Right now is is um a Google map that has the wormhole um drawn in. That's his map so far. What he's working on now is what he presented to the city at city council.
Presented to the city with a, with a map.
But it's a larger scope. I mean, it includes San Isidore National Forest and Trinidad Lake State Park.
Another, okay.
He's got the section map from the county.
It's the F D H U dot com, I think is their name. They're the ones who developed the map for the county that shows all the county maps, wormhole included. It's not been purchased. I proposed in our last meeting that we buy the map so we can print the maps and sell the maps.
Is the map, can we buy it? Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's for sale. It's ten thousand dollars.
And do we know what, what format?
It would be a trifold waterproof map of the county.
So is it already developed? We just have to pay the money out and it's.
So we would be buying, we would be buying this map from.
F, it's F D H U or E D H U or I can't remember.
Now, what map is Tim Kersler working on?
He's just working up a G I S map.
He, he, he presented, he presented a map.
If you go into the county courthouse, it's on the wall. It's the section map for the county.
It's like a master plan map, but it isn't owned by anybody. It belong, it's public record.
So Nancy, on this map that we might purchase, let's say the, it shows the wormhole loop on it, but let's say a new trail was developed. Let's say the lackey trail was developed. Can it be added to this map?
Yes.
Or would we have to buy it again or, okay?
They just keep refining it.
Do we have a maintenance fee with them to keep refining it?
There probably would be.
Can they put all that in writing?
Yes, okay.
That's what you need is to review.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get you the name right now. Let me just look here real quick. The map that Tim is talking about is part of the comprehensive master plan, which is the county.
The counties.
But Trinidad Trails does not own the map. Somebody's gotta buy the map in order to get the maps for the bikers printed. So, so when we talked about this at the last.
Or at least available online. That's the big thing, right there.
And that's, so my question would be if if these guys could come answer you is say you've got a millennial who doesn't wanna printed map.
Yeah, and they got it on their phone.
And you could put it on your, you could put it on your website. You buy it, you could put it on your website, then is it, does it have G I S markers? I mean, those are like some questions you might ask this company if, if even this company would come visit with you. So if I'm a millennial and I download the map, does it tie in with G I S? Like, does it give you elevations?
It's probably um more, um it's probably more informative than the county.
I'm sure, yeah. The county's gonna be a PDF, so it's just gonna be a picture of a map.
Right.
I'm curious if this map is integrated in some way to location markers or or.
It's interactive.
I have, I think Tim Kersler sent me when I was requiring, when I was inquiring about the maps a couple of months ago that said that um and then, oh, then I guess that there's one here on February tw- twenty-fifth that says oh, you're, he was gonna get with you February twenty-fifth and update the wormhole loop map with the additional trail that has been completed.
Right.
So we did, we did meet and we were working on getting the wormhole loop map done.
Tim Kersler about these maps.
That's just a small, that's just a, what we're trying to do is redevelop this trifold that was put out for wormhole loop. So that just identifies that one section. So that just identifies that one section that's set over by the land. If it works, the way it's being described, it could be great, but I think you've gotta clarify how it would work exactly.
And so we'll just leave that as a discussion until you can get with these people.
Well, I, I really think that we need to have the bike maps for summertime, so.
They're waterproof, they're, it also can show uh rivers, lakes, it's.
We just need a proposal in writing.
Yes, and would also eventually take into account Fisher's Peak.
Yeah, so, so what, what you need in writing is what would the cost be initially, is there an ongoing maintenance cost? Is it interactive, can it be waterproof and printed, but can it also be a, accessed digitally? So I guess Nancy, if they can give you that in writing, you could get it to Marty and get it on. Or even better, if they can give it to you in writing and then show up and talk about it, that'd be ideal. I don't, don't know if they're available.
And, and this, and these monies can come out of uh advertising, right?
Can come out of where you decide, outside contracts?
Right, that's where we have the most money. But the thing is, if we own the map and we print the map, that's twenty thousand dollars. But we sell the maps and then also on the site, our, for a mobile site, they would have to pay to get the map.
So then down the road, it would pay for itself.
Well, or we would recoup some.
Or if they would even manage the financial side and then it could just go on your account, that'd be ideal. Where the city didn't have to do that, where if I download it and pay my five dollars, it comes back to their accounts, right? You're not actually collecting the five and giving it to them.
I think it's a, I think it's an asset for tourism.
Bat Masterson uh pictures that were around town a few years ago, and we paid for the Bat Masterson. But it wasn't a huge amount, I think we, it only cost us about six hundred dollars to print them and I think we made about six hundred, seven hundred dollars, but it paid for them.
But it's still, again, it's a service.
Yeah, no, I think they're important.
Trying to get to for Trinidad, for events, for.
Which then runs along our lines of promoting Trinidad tourism, you know, and it's what we have to offer.
And so does, does Marty have enough information so she can get that to the world? Do you have enough information, Marty, to get that to the board of, about the company and getting ahold of that?
I'll get the actual name.
Okay, yeah, I need, I need somebody to start.
I can get some research and, and I'll send, I'll send an email.
I do think.
Wasn't that the map that we saw at the welcome center? But didn't they pull that to the side, they could pull that to the side or that?
This is a state map, the one that we're discussing now is a lot, is, is county map.
Right, right, but I thought it was, we saw that big state map and they could pull that, our county out of that thing. Didn't we discuss that at the welcome center?
Well, what I did was, we showed a version of the, the map and how it would be laid out as far as a bike map specifically. And so that would, that was a model that we kinda looked at. It's, it's put together the same way except for uh not on a state basis, it's on a local basis. And so it, it brings, it, it identifies our local resources for hiking and biking.
And camping, I mean, it's, it can have legends for camping here, kayaking here, uh fishing here.
Recreational map is how it should be put forth or outside, outside recreation, uh instead of just bicycle?
Yeah. Bicycling right now is that's what we have.
But that was that map, right?
I believe so, the one that they had that was waterproof.
Can, can we also add things to that?
Yes, I believe so.
Like uh fishing in Monument Lake, fishing at Trinidad Lake.
Yeah.
Uh fishing.
Well, they'll have all that.
Well, like I said, it will also tie into Fisher Peak, all the county roads, I think also, um.
Just if we have a breakdown of everything that it is.
Yeah, we have legends for camping, fishing, hiking, um.
What's a production time, turnaround time for something like that?
The map is ready, it just needs to get, be paid for and then the printing and they'll do the printing.
Would you send that to Marty, can you copy me on that?
Yes.
Okay guys, I'm gonna have to excuse myself, I know you guys may still have some other things. I'm clear on what's needed for me. Uh, Tom and Nancy, next Monday to Thursday, what's the best day? Wednesday's pretty crazy for us, cause Goco's in town and they're doing the big Fisher's Peak celebration.
And, and, and.
Monday would be the best for me, but it doesn't have to be Monday.
Monday's good for me.
Monday works, what time of day?
You just give me a time and.
You give us a time, we'll make it work on our end.
Do you want to do it in, early in the morning?
Sounds good.
Nine?
Nine, Nancy, does nine work for you? Nine, my office, Monday.
Okay, can I ask Cheryl too?
Um, I'll, I'm gonna go down, Cheryl just emailed and said she got the ten thousand, so the ten thousand's here. So, um, I will email you the um, request that we did, it's a one paragraph request to get the ten thousand. A visitor profile study is what was decided in the initiative. Um, because it's such a small amount of money, I don't know that we, I know I said RFP earlier, I don't know that we need to do an RFP, but we are gonna have to identify someone who's capable of doing a visitor profile study. So I'll ask the state for contractors that they recommend. And maybe we could just get bids from those contractors. And then you'll need to select based on their bid, who you wanna work with. And if it's twelve thousand, then you'll have to decide if you wanna do two thousand additional dollars. And then I think you wanna meet with the contractor. What does a visitor information profile mean to you? Because it might be different than what it means to you. So this is a study once again. You're never gonna get away from studies when you're working with government, and that's what the state funds. So be thinking of, and if I said to you visitor information profile, be thinking of what the information you want. Rather than letting the contractor just give you what they think you need.
Right.
Think about what you want to get from those dollars.
And that's exactly why I was opposed to just granting money to RPM for a vision.
Right, so what I requested in the paragraph based on the craft discussion was what the deliverable should have in it, is it should tell you who your visitors are right now. It should tell you based on what's going on, what visitors you're not reaching, that you should be able to reach. And it should be able to tell you that based on similar rural jurisdictions with demographics and the same types of things. What visitors are you not even thinking about that might be available to you that you're not including in your. So you may, it may come and say dude ranch visitors or something that you should and have the capability given your agricultural base to draw, but you're not even thinking about that. That's what the paragraph said, that doesn't mean that's what you have to contract for. You could say, well, none of that's valuable except I wanna know who's coming now, I wanna know who our visitor is now. And then you might get a contract for six thousand dollars.
Here's, I'm gonna throw a monkey, a relational wheel.
That's fine.
Um, in talking with uh Tony Hassan Felix Lopez uh at the Chinewith Award Saturday night. Um, I asked them if they had considered a county tourism board. And if they were to do that, we may be able to enter into an agreement with the commissioners on sharing city and county visitor uh information.
Sure.
They, I suggested to them that they find some building in the county that's accessible to public for a county visitor center. Um, and to start talking with ranchers about RV B and B parking on their ranches, I think people are still looking for Western Heritage uh things to do, not just pumpkin mazes and
Would the, would the commissioners be open to putting on a ballot an initiative to expand the lodging tax into the county?
Oh, I don't even wanna.
When the lodging tax was first done.
If they did that, then.
Told something to do with Bruce, so they couldn't do it.
They're divorced now.
Yeah, but the, I don't wanna talk to them about the county right now in taxes because of the special tax that they're trying to push through and I think that
Recreation.
That's gonna sour a lot of people on taxes, but I'm just saying, or asking what this board thinks about talking to the commissioners. Cause we have two commissioners that are fairly open, I've not talked to Luis, I don't know him that well. About a county tourism welcome center.
Okay.
Um, for studies, if nothing else.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Whatever you think.
And dude, dude ranch sort of uh stuff.
I do think there is one danger that comes to mind in that. There was a discussion about three years ago with the Colorado Tourism Office when Gabe got crossways with them. Fruta and Burlington draw more visitors than any other state welcome center and it's because the partnerships with C dot. And the visitor centers are in C dot rest stops. So in other words, there's a section that's walled off that you put a code in and it's open from eight to five, but then it closes. But they capture every visitor that comes through there by a door count. So when Gabe got crossways with Colorado Tourism, there was a huge discussion at the state with, well, let's just go into a partnership with C dot for exit eighteen. And let's open a welcome center there, and we'll forego that. So keep in mind that if you go toward a county welcome center and you inadvertently point the county toward talking to Colorado Tourism and the outcome is that Colorado Tourism funds that, you will never get funding for the welcome center downtown. I just, I'm, I'm just saying an outcome.
Not even where I'm going, I'm not even, uh, this is a county do it yourself project.
I know, but do it yourself might come to, hmm, where can we get some funding for that? Oh, Colorado has a tourism office, I'm just, I'm, I'm way out there, way down the road. Discuss, suggesting to you that I think it's a great idea. Think about the possibility that there's an impact.
Well, I'm not familiar with all that Gabe England did, just so, so, if that was the reason.
So if you had back, you're with your state contract, then I think you'd be a lot safer. I think right now, if, I, I'm just, I.
Well, thanks for the warning.
Yeah, it's not really a warning, it's just a, a thought, it's just a thought.
I could see if they have, they have their own money.
To do the, a welcome center at La Puerta and whether or not that ends up being the city one that moves over there or something else. So keep in mind that we want that funding for you.
Yeah.
And we need to get that funding before anybody else gets that funding. That's all my point is.
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, I mean, Warfino County's trying to get that funding right now for one in Walsenburg. Saying, well, you don't fund Trinidad anymore, maybe you'll fund that, so there's players trying to get the funding and we're saying the funding belongs where it's been since nineteen eighty five, it belongs with us, we're good partners. We apologize that we had a city manager that got on the other side of you.
Couple of them.
Uh, one only, it's a one personality issue, this is really a one personality issue, it was not.
Right.
Yeah, and so why break up thirty years of partnership over a one personality issue that hasn't, was here for twenty three months?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. But after you have the funding, then absolutely have the conversation.
Well, this was based with the county, do something for yourself.
Yeah, do something for yourself, it'll take them a while to, to figure out where the pools of money are.
They, they'll think, yeah, I didn't realize they didn't have, uh, they divorced out there for some reason, cause it was. Um, for, in the reference to the um, website, RFP, do you have a, a guideline to go by to put that out?
I'm, I'm telling you, I think you guys need to talk with your new tourism members before Stat puts an RFP together. But we're happy to put the RFP together and we'll base it on the conversation with those of you that were here in October, November. But Nancy and Joey haven't been part of that conversation and I don't, I, I, my preference would be to have the full board at least have one discussion.
Well, maybe some of the, maybe the minutes, if we can bring up the minutes.
Why don't we go through Andrew's presentation again?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, Andrew's presentation, the thing I'm just worried about is, are you still able to maintain the website if we don't have anybody maintaining it right now? Cause I don't want it to fall away while we're going into March.
The only thing I have access right now to, and I'll say it again, is the calendar, so I have no way.
They haven't released it to you administratively?
No, well, no, this Thursday, that's when the date, that's the date for them to release it.
Oh, okay.
They were pending their final payment, when their final payment was received, then we'll get it released.
Has it been sent?
Yes, it's been sent, but we need that, have that conversation.
Okay.
Um, so to Si's point, I don't know that the website needs a lot of maintenance other than the calendar right now and Marty has access to that. But also the city has, um, does not have an IT director right now, so that as an extra caveat to.
Someone to update whatever we need to be.
She's no longer working for the city.
Oh.
Yeah, not my department, so I can't speak to those, those reasons.
We're gonna miss you, so.
Yep.
Thanks for your time.
Just send us my.
Good luck. Yeah, two more meetings, guys, I'm not going away. What I hear you saying is we, even though we have a meeting next Wednesday and it's a voting meeting, do you want us to add a little discussion about Andrew's plans so that Nancy and Joey, I know Si won't be here. But then you guys can turn around at the next work session and make a decision and then Marty can walk away, that'll be my final meeting. And we'll walk away with some direction on what kind of RFP you want. And then, um, I will work with Marty on that in my, in my last couple of days, okay? Oh, in fact, I'll just bring you the form that the department's used for RFPs and tell you what we need to fill out in that.
Before you move to adjourn Si or ask for a motion, um, I need one clarification based on the policy items. Um, the last Animal's County Dirt Series, if you're gonna vote on that at the next meeting or not, or if we're gonna extend this out. I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting on whether or not, um, it was gonna be funded in a timely manner so that he would have some funding. Um, and I think the discussion today was he needs to fill out that application that he was provided with for, um, grant funding.
How fast are all the other applications being, you're already getting them?
The deadline is not till the thirty first and the decision shouldn't be made, in my opinion, until all the decisions.
But he was verbally granted the money at one of our regular meetings.
Here's, here's one of the things I see about that is the funding on that, and this is just my personal opinion is when I was reading through the, I don't know if it was the ordinance or the actual grant thing was.
And I think we need to clar- clarify Nancy's statement, because we've got tourism board members saying yes, he was verbally granted money and tourism board members saying no.
Si said.
And the motion was to table, so.
Until she gets a timeline for the expenses.
Yeah, what I said was that I don't have any problem funding uh bikes, you know, his, his things. But we need it broken down and tell us what we're gonna do with RFPs.
So have you guys approved twenty thousand for?
I, no.
Yes, we did.
Okay, see, that's the problem Stat's having is there's a disagreement.
No, we, we were gonna meet him in stages if he provided it.
It was sixty five hundred, fifty five hundred and then something else, it's in that contact thing.
I think in the motion to table, it was talked about five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, but it was unclear to us as to whether you were approving funding or you were, you used the word table, but you also said until he could provide. So we need decision, Camilla's out of this discussion, but we need the three of you to tell us whether or not he's been given money or not based on your opinion in a voting meeting.
We, we did grant him money until I went back and read the actual grant form.
Which he didn't have at the time.
Right, and, and here, here's, here's where I say we, we, we rolled it out wrong.
Right.
We, we did the, we did the wrong thing, if you, ah, if.
The reason we want justification, guys, is if you have granted him money and you don't wanna give that money until you do a competitive grant round, you're gonna actually need to do a motion and correct that.
It was sixty five hundred upon the uh initial and then sixty five hundred in May and seven thousand in July.
So I would say.
And that's when Si said, can you break it down and tell us what, we will get sixty five hundred dollars for what's sixty five and what's seven?
So when I listened to it, I didn't hear those numbers, I heard five thousand over four times, on the day you voted.
Right.
And I asked him, I said, how much do you need to get started? Cause he will incur out of pocket expenses.
So we have a decision, we've gotta have some direction.
Do you remember how much he would say would be at the, at the first?
He said sixty five hundred is fine.
No, no, I, I'm not talking about the money part, I'm talking about how many participants he would have in the first race.
Well, who knows, a hundred is the minimum, what he's thinking.
His number was lower than that, I think is what he had told me. And, and one of the stipulations in the grant form is how many, how many do you bring into the city? What's, what do you bring into the city?
Who knows now?
Well, see, and those are the things that we had asked him for, you know, and, and, and that goes within filling of the grant form.
Okay, but now we're backtracking on something we'd already agreed on.
It doesn't, it.
In the feedback, Si tells me that you didn't grant money, Nancy tells me that you did grant money.
We, we did grant him the money.
Okay.
And, and, and you're gonna say that because, but we also wanted.
Marty's impression was initially.
We also wanted to know what he, how much he was gonna need for each one. Okay, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that, that we did it, cause we did. My thing is this, is we, we did it wrong, so now.
Yeah, well, I remember saying we don't have any problem with what he's got going on. But we need it more definitive and a different sort of phraseology that I used. So you need to come back to us and say like the seven races are gonna cost this much and come back to us. And then they even talked about him coming back monthly and I said, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna like, that's kinda jumps things up when somebody comes back monthly. But what we have right now is a twenty thousand dollar proposal, we don't know what, what's going to where, we have to come back and, and.
And that's what we asked him for.
And so that means that this round, we would maybe give him, or right there, the six. And so that means that this round we would maybe give him or right there, the sixty-five hundred or the seven thousand dollars for seven races. And those would be advertising and marketing dollars. And then in June, we would grant X amount of dollars and then.
So Si, you're not arguing that he was given the twenty thousand. You're just saying it won't come as a twenty thousand dollar check.
And it won't come, it won't.
And he's fine with that.
And it won't count. It will.
If you give him sixty-five and he doesn't perform on that, then he won't get the rest of it.
Correct. That's, and I was trying to, I was trying to manage him so that, so that if we done, if he did that and he did it right, then we would go to the next stage.
So here's what Marty needs to know then. So we're all in agreement that Juan has been granted. In a voting meeting up to and not to exceed twenty thousand for the purpose of implementing these races. Okay, that's number one. Number two, what Marty needs.
Nobody made a motion. The action that was taken was tabled, so what I'm looking for is this, this going back on the agenda. Next Wednesday to vote properly, whether or not, for a motion, with a motion saying. He is going to be getting X amount of dollars in this, you know, uh, uh, the, in these increments. Um, and not as a competitive grant process.
Wanted to come through the competitive grant process.
So we need to be clear on how that's gonna proceed.
Here's the thing that holds everything up right now, is do we have that information from him?
You can make that amendment or you can make that in your motion. You can say. Is there a motion to approve this fund based on performance per funding cycle? So that you, you base how you're going to, to supply the funding in your motion.
So if he doesn't.
But I think even more than that, Marty's saying, do you want it on the agenda for next Wednesday? Or what we're, what we were walking away thinking, so I'm glad we're clarifying this, is we were not gonna put it on the agenda. We were gonna wait for a competitive grant application. We need to know which you want. We're not advising.
So, so are we going against?
Is that not what you were saying, Tom?
Right, are we going against the rules by not having a grant application?
I think.
He gave us a contract.
Because he didn't have a grant application then.
So that's our fault.
That's right.
That's our fault. No, I'm not backtracking. I'm not backtracking at all.
Yeah, they were. They're always available, those grant applications.
I'm not backtracking at all. All I'm doing is trying to direct us into doing it right.
So you would like him to fill out an application, submit it with everyone else and you'll consider it along with everyone else's applications at the first meeting in April?
Do you feel, I, I feel that's the proper way to do it.
Camilla?
You know, it's, it's not that he's.
That's the proper way. He needs to fill out a grant application. That is what he.
Everybody does.
And it comes with everybody else's and it's considered with everybody else's. Is that what you're saying or? He fills one out and, and gets it to Marty by Friday and it's on next week's meeting.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. We, we did give him the money. I'm saying he.
If all you want is the form, I, I think he has the form, but he was given the form late. He hasn't turned it in. He's in Los Angeles.
But this is the proper procedure.
Since I won't be here based on this and I can get this to you guys or do it, we need to break that apart. We need to say. Then if he does this, the first section, this is the money that's granted for this. If he does that, because that doesn't break it out. So I don't really know what the second part is. I know the first part is, we're gonna get him going, stop the races. I just don't know what the second and third and fourth part is.
Here's, here's the way it should be done. Okay, so we have a grant cycle. The grant cycle's from.
March one.
March one to March thirty-one.
March thirty-one, and that takes care of, that takes care of the summer.
Yes, well, yes.
That's what's in purpose.
Whatever their grant request is for. They may want the money for something in June.
But the thing of it is, is we, we never, we never established what the twenty thousand dollar for a first time festival. What that would ever, the deadlines for that. We never established that. So I'm fine with him just filling out the proposal.
What do you mean there wasn't a deadline established?
Not for, not for the twenty thousand laws.
I have no idea, but supposedly he's got races.
April sixth.
April sixth.
Is the first one.
So you wanna do a hybrid?
Where is his core of? Where is this core to get this thing going?
He's working on it. He's doing it. They're already lined up.
And he's doing all this by himself. He doesn't have a core. That's what he does. I understand. On Facebook today, I saw him advertise a race for May fifteenth.
Yeah.
Where is that April fifteenth race who advertised?
It's on his schedule.
I didn't look on anything in Facebook of his showing a baseball race. I didn't show. But Camilla, I saw the May fifteenth all over the place.
So what Camilla's saying is she hasn't seen it advertised.
May fifteenth isn't on here either. That may be a totally separate race. Well, it's got his name all over it. So what? Okay, I, I'm just saying, why, where's the advertisement? If you don't want him to do this, don't give him the money. I just feel that this is all turned because he didn't fill out a grant application because.
It's not that he didn't fill out a grant application. Is we expect this from everybody, right?
Absolutely.
So, so, so we're gonna get off course for him?
No.
So, so then all I'm asking is this, he fill out the grant form. He's already gotten the money.
Maybe.
Just fill out the grant form. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Well, I, I want it to be broken down.
But, but she asked, also asked him to bring the breakdown of what he's doing for us.
About how we got into this case. So we didn't have any money. Um, we knew that craft one-on-one existed. We couldn't do anything about it. And as December rolled around, last month was January and all of a sudden he came forward with his proposal. We, we hadn't had grant cycles last year, cause we didn't have the money. We had very little. So that's how he walked in with that paperwork.
So it's not Juan's fault that we entertained it.
And then we decided that we were gonna have grant cycles this year. And that's all happened in this last month. So, so it's sort of. It's sort of fuzzy there, but that's, it's not that anybody did anything wrong there. It was just the way it worked. We're only talking about last month.
What do you think about this as a solution? That, that meets both. Next week at the meeting, what is Juan asking for, for this first race, for these spring races? What is he asking for for the spring races?
Asking for, according to this, this document, sixty-five hundred dollars. Like and, and. For film production, photography, event day for coordination. He's got his website up and going. Uh, log, uh, logo and banner, relation cycle, social media.
Here's my suggestion then.
It's right here, Camilla, in this document.
Juan fills out a grant form and brings it next Tuesday, next Wednesday, okay? And you consider sixty-five hundred of the twenty only.
Right.
And you vote to allocate sixty-five hundred of the twenty only for phase one of him. And in that motion. You say this is for sixty-five hundred. Here are the deliverables we're expecting. And then thereafter. If he wants to come back for the balance of any of the money, he goes through a published grant cycle with everyone else to come back. So if he performs on the sixty-five hundred, if he performs on the sixty-five hundred and he's ready for the second phase, the second amount. Then he, he does a grant application and wins the next round June.
Well, here, here's, 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 here's the thing with that. The sixty-five, the sixty-five hundred dollars is coming out of. The twenty thousand dollars that's granted for a new festival.
But you may wanna give a portion to another new festival as well out of that.
So we are gonna give him that and.
Okay, so here, here, here's where I'm going, Tom, is I think what you've done is you've said to Juan, you wanna support his events. And you're gonna allocate over a period of time up to twenty thousand dollars to do that and you're not gonna rescind on that, okay? But what's that period of time? That period of time can be based on performance. If you give him the sixty-five hundred and you have deliverables. And he goes out and he begins to do deliverables and he creates the film and the website and all the things Nancy's talking about. And he comes back in June for part two and he fills out the same form and he says, I'm back for my phase two.
And this is what I did.
What I did with your first one, then he should get phase two. If he hasn't quite completed that, then you don't take the rest of it away from him. He just comes back in the next round, round for it. So eventually. Juan accesses twenty thousand dollars. If he performs, that's over a period of what's he suggesting Nancy, nine months?
Uh, if the races go from April to September and his funding is uh current day to July.
Okay, so he could come back in June if he performs on these and he gets this money immediately. Cause as soon as you approve it, he performs. So you're doing two things. You're honoring your commitment that you made to Juan, but you're also keeping the grant cycle pure by having him come back for that second tranche in June. I know that's not exactly the timeline he proposed.
You asked me if I'm reading this wrong.
Okay.
Upon execution of this, he wants sixty-five hundred dollars. Okay, then on May of two thousand nineteen, there's another sixty-five hundred dollars. And then July, there's seven thousand dollars, which totals to twenty. So we're so close to May.
I'm not suggesting you execute that at all. I don't think you execute that at all. I think you do sixty-five hundred, you have him come back in June for the next sixty-five hundred. You have him come back in September for the seven. And I know that's a different timeline.
That's why I tell you that he needs to fill out a grant form.
Or he can fill out a grant form for the whole twenty and come to you and you can decide what to do. It sounds like.
It's a performance based grant.
Performance based grant.
And I don't think, think it's necessary to fill out three grant forms when he's been granted the twenty thousand by performance.
And that's, that is yours to decide. I was offering a compromise.
That could be in the form of the motion.
Right.
So once again, Marty needs some duh, some guidance on what you want on next Wednesday's agenda.
So does, does the sixty-five hundred on uh, if we approve it on that, or you guys approve it, it won't be here on next week's agenda? Will that be based on, um, will that come out of the grant money or is that somewhere else on our budget?
What if, what if we did this? He wants sixty-five hundred on the first one.
We certainly clarify, won't we do that?
You put this aside today. You just need to clarify what Marty's putting on the agenda for next Wednesday.
Get it on the agenda for a motion.
Or you don't put it on the agenda, he fills out a grant.
You can have that discussion, Tom, in the such regular meeting prior to the finalization of the vote. You, we can't decide on it now.
I'm not deciding on it. I was just like.
He's got, Si asked him to bring back. Yes. Information. And if he doesn't bring back that information next Wednesday.
He's out of town, Camilla, and he said he would. He said he would.
But I'm saying if he doesn't come back with that information and the grant, then we table it until the next time he can come back to the table. If that information that she asked for.
Wrong here and I wanna, I, I just think, by the way, the grant cycle worked and he delivered our paper, cause that's the way people used to do it when we didn't have grant cycles. So I do think that he needed to have a grant paperwork attached to it. But he needs to come back and do that breakdown for us and, and.
Which he said he would do.
So have you decided to entertain Juan's request outside of the regular grant cycle of May, March one to March thirty-one?
Is really the question.
Uh, that's the question.
So the tough thing is that Tom's right. We've decided we do it in the grant cycle, but prior to him giving the paperwork, we hadn't started that grant.
So the question is, do you want to entertain Juan's funding proposal outside of the normal grant cycle of March one to March thirty-one?
Yes.
Camilla?
Yes.
You're not, we're not supposed to be voting.
I'm polling you. I'm allowed to poll you to get direction on the agenda. Nancy, yes?
I want it on the agenda, yes.
Yes, we, we all want it on the agenda.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
But the parliamentary rules say, when the motion is made, the motion can be made to say specifically. I moved to moot, I, I moved to make a motion that he be granted the twenty thousand in one grant application. To be dispersed by performance over three time periods.
Or the motion could say, well, and I, I make a motion, we entertain sixty-five hundred only. I mean, the motion can say anything.
Yeah, right.
We will put on the agenda consideration of the proposal by, so the second question is it's on the agenda. Prior to considering it, do you want the grant paperwork?
Well, he should have, he should have a cover letter. No matter what time of year it was, he should still have his cover letter. That's whatever, that's whenever we've granted money, we've needed.
We wanna give Juan correct direction. We don't want him to come in and say, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't bring what we're expecting you to bring.
He has to, he has to have a grant application form with him.
One or three?
One.
One, then he could break it down for the twenty and we could break it down.
That's what, that's what this was all about.
And that's what we had asked him for in the beginning, is until I, is, is for him to bring, break it down as to what he was gonna do per event.
Right, and he said he was going to do that.
So when I got this and I started reading this, I don't know if you've read this, but you, this is where I'm stuck with the guidelines of this. You want parliamentary procedure on everything else. This is parliamentary procedure right there.
Well, it's just tourism procedure.
Well, it's procedure.
Right, exactly.
So do you wanna go with your procedure and go off of this one?
I'm fine with one grant application, but not three.
I never said three.
That was my understanding.
That was my suggestion only.
No, that's not my understanding.
Okay, so we are gonna have Juan consideration of the proposal on the agenda. And you are gonna consider it next Wednesday.
And you will have a budget in front of you that shows comparative budgets of what we have left to spend in case you need to refer to that. Because we will.
That will only come out of the twenty thousand, yeah. Or the seventy thousand one.
Um, the other thing that I might just uh note for you too is that next week, besides all the Fisher's Peak stuff that's going on, that I will miss. Um, is uh SBDCC is in town.
Small Business Development Council.
And they're being dropped off downtown every night on Tuesday and Wednesday night, so you'll see.
State business people.
This week or next week?
Next week, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you so much, Jira. I need a motion to a, so moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, guys. Thank you, Tom.
This lovely weather is so nice after all this cold.
It is, absolutely. She was her, now that the camera's off, her uh, point was terminated.